I was intrigued by no one asking the questions about the legal.
What's happening here?
The minutes, I get through it, it didn't show. And I know the minutes are only supposed to reveal what's decided, not what we said. But we had a lot of questions. I'm back before you have a lot of issues that was like in doing that. So.
That's the one that's causing the problem.
Again, Mark was, if you were, you know, you're bad.
Hey, guys.
Going to over the June 7th Hamilton County Council. Madam Attorney, I have a roll call.
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
And with the invocation and pledge, Councilman Tim Griffin.
Yes. Stand. All right. Gracious Father, we gather before you today to ask for your wisdom, guidance, as we deliberate for the betterment of our community. Grant us unity and compassion for those who we serve and the humility to make just decisions. May our actions honor you and promote your well-being in all we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is to stick with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Your first item on the public hearing is Resolution CC 0607. Huh? Oh, I thought I was just gonna read it.
Hi, guys. Tonight before you guys, is Resolution Number CC 0607 2023.1A. It's a resolution of the Hamilton County Council making a determination of the need of certain capital improvement projects and making a preliminary determination to enter into a lease agreement authorizing the circulation of taxpayer petition and ordering appraisals. Tonight with us, we have Landon Bain from Robert W. Baird. He's our underwriter. Oscar Gutierrez from Bondry is our municipal advisor. And Zach Clutz with Tap Law Firm is bond counsel. Just wanna kinda touch on the actual project itself, then I'll hand off the finance part to Oscar and Landon, and the resolution to Zach. So this project, I believe, was originally brought for the county in 2018. They did a study with it, and at the time, they got a design and they had it building out towards the river. It came in about $28 million in 2018 money. At the time, it was way over budget, and there were some issues with existing utilities, some major water utilities right beyond the building and right close up to the river, and some less for once. And so at that point in time, it was put on pause, definitely. And then, I believe, the last two joint county council commissioner meetings, this project has been identified as a priority project by both bodies. And that's kinda how we're at, where we're at now. We are going to use the BOT procurement method, which has not been issued at this point in time. The idea of that is it will be a, allow a developer to bring the best value-add proposal to the county, whether it's continuing on towards river or some other site location. All that would be part of a proposal brought to you all by, or the county and by a developer. And I believe there will be at least one member of the council on that review committee. I think it might be Councilman Brad Beaver, when the time does come. And I think with that, the, I guess another thing I wanted to add too is, I think 2018 is when we had special legislation that was passed to up our controlled project limit. I know that we were able, we're gonna use that in cash, and it was still on budget. Since then, we've had new legislation also that has Hamilton County to build in the court, which we are in the process of doing. So it's to help fill court space, and also some other office space. But, again, I'm sorry, I wanna go back to 2018. That project, that $28 million figure, was just a shell as well, too. So it wasn't even building out the whole three floors, office space, everything like that. It was just first floor, a shell, and obviously wouldn't be operational. So again, that's kinda why we're at the point we are now. With that, Landon Bain and Oscar Gutierrez wanna talk about some of the financial plan for this. And just wanna emphasize that the financial strategy is, has been worked with Oscar and Landon in conjunction with Mike Royder every step of the way as well. And I believe the Finance Committee has been briefed by Mike Royder as well, too. So I know that's an important thing. I wanna make sure everyone's aware of it as well, so.
Good evening, Council. Oscar Gutierrez, Bondry Consulting, MA to the county. Before we get into more of the details, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that there, in your package, there should have been a preliminary determination statutory informational sheet that has all of the highlights. Also, there are roughly 30 copies available to the public for anybody that wants to read into it, into this. What I wanna cover as part of the statutory requirement of a public hearing is let me go through the highlights of the sheet before I get into the strategy. So what I'm, yes, ma'am?
Can I interrupt? We do not have that document that you're referencing.
Here they come.
Thank you.
Yep. The, this is the maximum parameters of this potential issue, which is, you know, the highlights are, it's a power of $55 million maximum. The maximum annual payment for this would be $6 million. This would, the plan of finance for this would be a combination of CCD and property taxes. How we have been working with Mike is that this would still be part of the overall no-tax increase plan, and this is still part of that parameter. So while you are looking at maximum rates here, that doesn't mean that the plan is to issue a $55 million bond. I believe that the plan of finance, as we understand it, is to have $55 million available and to not have to go over any potential project cost. So while I can't speak of the BOT process, I can say that we feel comfortable with the $55 million amount to be paid back from a combination of CCD and property taxes over 20 years and not have a property tax increase. Anything that you'd like me to add? And I'm happy to entertain any questions regarding the statistics on here regarding the tax rate and payments. Again, this doesn't take into.
Are you under the assumption there's some kinda timetable on us? Because as a member of the Finance Committee, I will let you know that we did talk to Royder about that, and we can maintain our no-tax increase with a $5 million bond for a road project that we're all generally in agreement. So as far as I'm concerned, we don't have a timetable pressure that, as far as we see it.
And, and I'm sorry if I've mixed, I didn't mean to say timetable pressure in any.
No, no, I said no.
Okay, yeah. What I'm saying is that if you were to take this maximum parameter annually, it would not have impact.
Yeah.
You are saying is if you issued a $5 million payment to be used towards roads as one year payment, it would have the same effect.
Right.
You are correct.
Right.
So this body does have the ability to issue up to this amount for any purpose.
Yes.
And you see fit. All of that is correct.
I understand. I didn't know for myself, I understood through the Finance Committee, so everybody understands, we're not under the gun. Whenever we get ready to do this, we can do this. It doesn't have to be by the end of this year to make the tax rate, this, we have that under control. Whenever there's a comfort level with the project.
Right.
We can go ahead.
There has to be something done this year, doesn't have to be this. You're correct on that. I agree.
Okay.
I believe that the reason this is coming before you is to allow, if the desire of this board is to then issue bonds for that project, to be able to do it this year as that option.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to have more than you got tonight.
I don't disagree. I mean, you probably have to have a contract that has a number up to or less than this amount. So with that, I know there's no disagreement there.
Okay.
And this doesn't bind us to that project, it just starts the process.
It just begins the process, and I would let our legal counsel answer any legal requirements, but as I understand it, it does that, but.
Good evening, Council. Zach Clutz with the Tap Law Firm and serving as bond counsel for this proposed project and proposed financing. You are correct that this is the very preliminary stage, statutory required step to initiate the process. Because the debt service would be paid through a property tax pledge and because of the size of the proposed bonds, this will be deemed a controlled project, and we will be operating under the controlled project statute, which requires a preliminary determination by this body to move forward with the project. A preliminary determination that the project's needed, and a preliminary determination that you wanna move forward with the financing. Those actual determinations will be with the standalone bond ordinance that you're used to seeing, of an ordinance that authorizes the issuance of bonds or entering into a lease and sets forth the definitive financing terms. That's why this is just called a preliminary determination resolution. That's why the statute requires two public hearings, one of which is tonight, the second of which we have scheduled for your July 5th meeting. The purpose of this is simply to present the project, make financial information available that Oscar just discussed. It's statutorily required, provided to you, and it's also available to the public, and then allow the public to testify or provide testimony as to their position on the project and the financing. Once that is, if this resolution, and we're not asking for this resolution to be adopted this evening, it's contemplated and reconsidered at your next meeting for adoption, that would then allow us to publish a notice that a preliminary determination has been made to move forward, and a 30-day notice period. And then, after that, or in tangent with that, we would consider the more definitive bond resolution. But that is why this is deemed a preliminary determination. I will say, if there's anything definitive about it, it is the amount. We're having a public hearing on a $55 million bond issue. If later on, that amount needs to be higher, we would need to restart the process. If it's lower, that's no problem, because this is an out-of-received amount. But we are having a public hearing providing financial information and making preliminary determinations on an amount not to exceed $55 million and on a project that involves the judicial center. So the project's scope couldn't change either, nor could the maximum parameter. But you're under no obligation to move forward.
Okay.
With the preliminary, we're not under any obligation to move forward.
You're not. I mean, there will be a separate bond ordinance that.
Right.
That you would have.
So even if we adopt or vote on the preliminary finding in the July meeting, we're still under no obligation to issue $55 million worth of bonds?
I couldn't give a bond opinion on a preliminary determination resolution.
Okay.
And you wouldn't find a bond in the market.
Right.
In essence, this is a procedural step that has to be done, whether we go into a bond this year or in subsequent years for this project.
Well, sure, but it's $55 million, and we got this nine minutes ago.
Well, I understand. I'm just saying that procedurally, this is a procedural step in that process.
That's exactly right. It's a statutory required step, because this involves property tax and involves a bond in excess of $18.3 million. So under that construct, this body is required to hold two public hearings and make a preliminary determination, kind of put the public on notice, that you have made a determination of need and a determination to move forward. Which, when I say move forward, means prepare the offering documents, prepare a bond ordinance, prepare the lease, bring in the Hamilton County Public Building Court. There's a lot of steps after this, but this is the preliminary determination of which we would publish notice, and it would run the 30-day clock for the controlled project process.
Connor, excuse to come back forward. One of the questions I have with this is from that procedural step, to get to the, as I get through these two first phases, is just procedural, but in order to get to that next phase where you wanna come forward with a, with a bond resolution, what documentation will this body be provided prior to that to understand the significance of the project?
If I understand you correctly, to justify the $55 million, is that?
Will it justify whatever bond we're putting out?
I think at that point, we will be able to get you something that has some kind of, whether it's a schematic design or something like that, I don't foresee us being able to go through.
Can I, can I, just so I understand, Craig, being in that world, so the idea is that we're not gonna do this before we engage in the RFP process for the bot?
Yes.
That this would be after, that that would, so it would happen after the bot is done?
The RFPQ will be issued here probably within the, I'd say, probably, was approved Friday with subject to some legal changes to it. We will likely publish notices out here within the next seven days or so, then there'll be 30 days to receive proposals and go from there. But yes, it'd be, we're trying to time it up so that it would work with not only Royder's plan, and if you wanna be able to close on the bond this year, but also time it up with the BOT procurement process, so you guys would have something to.
So in essence, we'd have a schematic, a schedule, and a program that would be associated with the building project and a location that we're going forward, so that when we go into the bond resolution, we have a little bit more collateral that we could absorb?
Depending on how fast we wanna move on the bond, it's possible.
We have no timetable on a bond.
Oh, yeah, so essentially, yes, we could have moved far, a lot farther along the BOT process towards that guaranteed max price before we do that. You have the flexibility to do that.
I think what I'm hearing is, is we want to have all of that before.
Yeah. I just don't know how quickly we can get that guaranteed max price before you, so I would wanna say it'll be August, or July, August, or September, or something like that, because it could take a couple of months in theory.
I would think it would take many months.
Many months, yeah.
But, and just, I can be clear, I think what the goal is of this body is to understand the, in total, what the scope of the project is before we're going into a bond resolution, so that when we're asked questions and we are, and we are asked to defend a decision to move forward with a bond, that we can say, it is because of this need, it is this much space, and it's at this location, and here's why we're doing it.
Yeah, I think that's a very safe to say. I still wanna come out on time, how quickly we get that, but yes, we can, we will have, it depends on if you guys' comfort level, commissioner's comfort level, and with how close we are to the guaranteed max price. It could be well before, or at the guaranteed max price, but yes, you could have those documents in hand before you make that.
Yeah, but I fully agree with Ken. I think we all feel that way, and that's why I wanted to point out to you that we're under no time pressure on our tax levy. We've already got that covered, so you can't say, oh, man, you gotta issue these bonds because we gotta have them by October. We're not under that. When you have a project that needs funded, and we see it, then we'll go down that path.
And I, and I agree with everything you said. I just wanna just make one clarification, that you will have to issue something, even if it's for a road, for $5 million in CO.
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make that.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't say that, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm just, yeah, but this year is what I'm saying, like.
Yes, no, we understand that.
So I guess the decision matrix here is this opens up the ability to choose this over that, and it doesn't make you do it.
Right.
So you can always just do the road bond and get this down to 2024, and that would be okay.
Yeah.
And that is all correct, and so I just wanna.
Because we want a quality project, it's well thought out, not hurried to meet some arbitrary bond issuing guideline.
Yeah, I would just say that from.
And that was not the intent that.
And I, and I know that that's exactly what you guys are looking for as well. I believe that, and I think this body is just looking to get that process to understand a little bit more in depth on what the, before we go into a major financial commitment, that we have a better understanding of the project as a whole. So that's no big deal. I don't think there's anything for us to act on tonight, this is just the open public hearing.
It'd be hard to close without a PMP legally, too, because we wouldn't wanna issue 55 and then 56.
Yeah.
I'm just making up.
Or we issue 55, and they come back with a two-car garage, but, see, we wouldn't wanna do that.
That's a healthy two-car garage.
To most part, we're just starting the process for the bonds, so if everyone's comfortable, we have that guaranteed max price, you can do it this year if you want, if we get that guaranteed max price. It's just starting the process, and so that's the main gist of this.
The left lobe has been very focused on this, it's the right side. Have any comments?
Just love the information when it's there, and knowing that the total dollar amount not to exceed is keys, and what we get for that dollar, so.
I just reiterate, and it sounds like we wanna see a lot before it, before we okay it.
I think it's, that's normal. So with that, I'm going to, if there's any other comments, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing correctly this time. Opening the public hearing regarding the preliminary determinance in Resolution CC 0607 2023.1A. A resolution, Hamilton County Council making a determination of the need of certain capital improvement projects and making a preliminary determination to enter into a lease agreements and authorizing circulation of taxpayer petition ordering appraisals. We need to make that into an acronym next time.
You didn't have to say it all. Just say no.
Well, I did. All right, well, any public comments? This is the time to come forward. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 3 regular meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay. All right, committee and officer reports. President, I have nothing to really add. The vice president?
I have nothing.
Highway?
We did not meet, but there are two small items on the agenda later.
Finance.
I would, I would ask you to look at the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting. The main topic was the stuff we just discussed with these guys and what we had to do and when we had to do it. The second thing was reallocation of ESAP lit money. Nothing was firmly decided, we're just keeping up to speed on what money savings we're getting there. Third thing was the sheriff's pension, I don't know, sheriff, have you seen this?
I have not.
Anyway, what we pretty much are gonna recommend to the council at budget hearing is we're gonna put a million two of cash into a line of, line of duty death benefit, and we're gonna finance it ourselves, we're gonna put that money in there, it'll set accrue interest, if there's ever a tragedy, that money's, rather than going to a third party to finance that. On the other issue, the sheriff sent to us a recommendation to increase the retirement benefit. Basically, what we decided to do is, is it didn't meet everything that the sheriff requested, we're going to set that date at 67.5 years, and we're gonna have a 2.5 annual cost of living increase, which costs us about $250,000, as opposed to what the sheriff recommended, which was $550,000. That'll be our recommendation. We can go further into it at budget hearings. These are benefits for future retirees, not the guys who are retired now, the ones that will retire in the future. And we also had a discussion that I'll postpone to the end of the meeting on property tax relief. I'll go into the details on a proposal I personally had, but I'll save it for the end of the meeting for you to peruse. That's it.
All right. Anybody have anything you wanna add to that? All right, personnel. We met, and there'll be several items later in the agenda. Okay. All right, any miscellaneous? All right, seeing none. We have table business, anyone motioning for that? Seeing none, moving forward to new business. Motion to approve vendor claims.
It's a move.
Second.
All those in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion approved. Next item, Resolution CC 0607 2023.2A. Point two.
I'm, wait a minute.
Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Motion to table.
Second.
All right, is this, so we have, this is open for conversation? Do we wanna put a table in this?
No, I'm trying to make sure I'm on the right page.
It's at the airport.
Oh, it is the airport?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to table there.
Second.
Some late things have come up, and they're not ready to move forward with that.
Okay. All right. We have to vote on that, so.
Sue, or you had a motion.
Then, so I withdraw my.
You withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for the tabling. All those in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Brad.
All right, next item is Vexa Pure Hybrids and Compliance with Statement of Benefits. We have, is Mike Scholler here? All right, great, wonderful. Two items, first is a real property resolution, and the second is a personal property resolution. Do we have a motion to approve?
It's a move.
All right, so.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
First, just thank you for the work that you guys do for the county, and hope you guys have a good environment for people to live and for people to work. We've already seen over the report to, but given we continue to grow, we continue to hire people. Just a little bit of background, roughly, you know, 475 people are deployed to Atlanta every day. A little over half of those live in, or live in Hamilton County. We continue to hire roughly 20 positions open today to recruit the office in Atlanta, so we're able to get those filled, but there's a number of continuing to find and continue to grow. Any questions, any further questions?
We had over the, over the past, what, 15 years, we've had a series of tax abatements. How many have fallen off, and where are we at now? Do you have a general idea?
My understanding is this is the last.
That's the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're not really voting on anything.
I know.
It's just a compliance statement.
Yeah, they're in compliance with the requirements for the last tax abatement, but I knew we'd done several over the years. Vex has always been a good corporate partner for the county and has always been in compliance, but I knew some of them had fallen off. We're on the last one. Okay.
How much did you spend on that tower?
On the tower, tower itself was roughly $42 to $45 million. The warehouses, other ancillary buildings, and support systems, support that and other, well, yeah, I mean, total on this abatement, I think it was $82 million.
As I understand it, that allows you to put a lab here that brought jobs here that did not go to Ohio? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, so, so the addition of that tower in Atlanta, it closed a tower that we were, we were hiring people to, hiring another company to process C4s in Ohio. Opening that tower.
Opening that tower in Atlanta closed the one in Ohio, and they had to let all the people go, so it moved all those positions to Indiana. It also allowed us to, because of the more, more volume running through that facility allowed us to open a lab to be able to do our own C testing as opposed to outsourcing that as well, so that was being done, I forget what county, but not in Hamilton County by any means. So it has certainly brought more jobs to the county and more opportunities as well. So we're, we're very appreciative of the help of the county if there's some.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, do you know, do we have any other tax abatement still outstanding? Everybody else is either closed down or to the end of.
Yeah.
Retired, yeah, that's a good word. All right.
All right, next item is, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding additional appropriations. First item is a, is a, from the auditor, it's a transfer of $108,910. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any, any comments or questions? Did personnel want to add anything to this?
This is just for, just a transfer, you want to talk about the, the change of position as well?
If we want to put a motion to combine the two, we can.
I would, just because they're coinciding.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to, to combine items 1A and 1B?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, go forward.
Well, this first one is favorable, the committee, the personal committee, a favorable recommendation to change the position to comma, to PAT B from comma F. This is to a executive assistant office manager based on the duties that the individual has been doing all along and wants that level of pay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, does that require any additional funding?
Not at this time.
Are you talking to me?
Yep.
I was talking to the personnel.
Maybe, but.
I would, I would be thinking he would be asking that question.
It does not.
Okay, it's within budget. My understanding is that since it's within budget, it would be an impact, it would be an increase next year, like many of these 144s that we're seeing today, while they might be within the current budget, it would, it's really an increase when we look at next year.
Just due next year.
Because you're going to have it for the full 12-month term.
In this situation, and there's several others that are coming up on the agenda, it's paying people for the job that they do, and we need to do that because that's the right thing to do, so, and we had extensive discussions in the, in the personnel committee about that, about what, when do you just adjust a job versus repost it versus whatever, we had extensive discussions. And in these specific individuals that are in all the different amendments that are coming up in front of us in a few minutes, they all are doing the job, they need to be paid to do that, the job that they're doing because it benefits the county.
I think one of the things, I got the personnel minutes, I didn't get them until today, they weren't provided to us, and so I think where Ken and I had connected with the auditor as we were planning for this meeting, one of the things that I think is beneficial is, in the personnel meeting minutes, it indicates the impact to the overall budget from an annual perspective. Ken and I had talked, and it's something we can talk about at budget hearings, but I think as we go forward, it would be good to under, like, have that here, right? So if we don't have information, we can know, hey, we see what it is from, you know, an annual salary, an annual rate, but I'd like to know the impact.
Yeah.
In one spot, so something over time, I'd like to add that to this document, whatever that looks like, but, and if we don't receive the personnel meeting minutes, can one of you make sure that we do?
Sure.
Yeah, because it was, I wouldn't, yeah, thank you.
Okay. With that.
And the other one was just backfilling, for the auditor's office was backfilling the position for, and to hire, to hire in above the minimum that's backfilling, know if they can, current, if they can fit in position.
Any other questions, comments?
None.
All right, call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approves. Next item, we have several under the commissioners, do we want to look at all of them together?
No.
Yeah, they're very different.
All right, commissioners, item 2A, 144 amendment, do I have a motion?
So, this is all encompassing though.
Which, which one?
I know, that's one, that's.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, Mr. Buckingham is here, so, but some are not, are different department directors.
I understand, that's why I was.
Right, we don't want to be.
Do I have a motion to, is, is, is the four, five that are shown right here, do you want to have a motion for each, to separate all, all five?
Four?
There's five, three new positions and then two reclassifications. So I think, yes, I mean, I think, I mean, you could, in the very least, the reclassifications for Rebecca and Diana could be done individually, and then you can move on to the next.
All right, do I have a, do I have a motion, do I have that motion? Someone's got to motion that.
Make a motion.
To do them individually?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
All right, first item, oh, I'm sorry, with the motion of to come, to look them separately?
Break them apart.
They're going to look at each one.
Right. Do you need a motion to break them apart individually?
No.
Right, okay, so you just need a motion for one.
Okay, we're looking at the first item, we have a new position for the county attorney.
Attorney.
All right, do I have a motion to, a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Lee, help us out here.
Thank you. What I can tell you is, at this point in time, we're asking for authorization to bring the county attorney, who is being paid currently contractually, we want him converted for the remainder of this year to a, to an employee, we would be utilizing the funds that are in the contractual services, transferring him over, so that he would end up being paid out of that, largely to cover that expense as an employee. We understand that there's, there's some concern about this is the starting of potentially a legal department, and that is something we will be addressing and asking for at the budget process. We're working on a presentation that will outline what that will be, but for right now, we're merely asking, not asking for the creation of a legal department, we're asking to convert the county attorney and the paralegal to county employees rather than the contractual service providers that they currently are at this point in time.
Lee, what's the impact of not converting them and doing this under the normal protocol of hiring any new positions and discussing at budget times? What's the impact if we were to wait until January 1, 2024, when you've gone through the process of the legal department creation and really created a thoughtful and robust business case that kind of lines out what a legal department, along with, you know, having Connor and a paralegal and maybe additional attorneys, what, what's the impact of waiting?
Well, as I understand it, at this point in time, we don't want to run afoul of any potential IRS regulations that would impact the fact that he's on that line of contractual employee, contractual service provider and employee, and I think we want to make sure we don't run afoul of that, that's at least in part why we're asking for it now rather than asking to wait six months.
Sorry, help me understand that. So as a contractual employee, we have concerns that, from an IRS standpoint, that he is...
So if, I am not an expert.
No, if Mark, Sheena, Connor, whoever.
As I understand it, there are, there are potentially some concerns of someone who's working as a contractual employee, yet is being directed in, in many other ways, is being treated or looks like an employee, but are not given the benefit of being an employee, you can run afoul of IRS regulations. I don't know if Connor can speak to that more than I can.
Yeah, that's a pretty summary too, and essentially be if you are providing someone office space, materials, and paying for other expenses of some sort, the IRS has caught on people and said, you can't, you know, do that, if you're trying not to treat them as a, as an employee, and so by doing all those things, which is what the commissioners are wanting to do, to be in compliance with the IRC for that, we would have to make the county attorney and the county paralegal employees rather than contractors.
So the commissioners want to, want to give you office space and supplies and all that, that's why we're making this decision now, so we're not running into, it's not that it has to be done, right? It's just so that, you could still maintain for six months as you have for the last six months though, right? And we could do this in a...
And I guess technically, we are paying right now rent for that, and so that is one argument, too, that by doing this, we would know how long I have to pay rent.
What's that rent?
Yeah, that, what's that?
What's that rent?
$2,000.
I believe it's $2,000.
So the county does provide the opportunity for Connor to be in to participate with our medical insurance, but they do not receive the other benefits that employees receive, like pay leave time, they don't receive our pension, you have to be deemed as an approved employee through PERF for them to have that, and so there are facets that we provide to other employees that they're not receiving today, and if they're treated as an employee, they have to be receiving all the benefits any employee would, that's a full time for Hamilton County or the department.
So are we not treating them as a contractor would be my question? Because what I'm hearing is, right, so we're not following, apparently we are not following protocol appropriately. If we're not, if we're, if there's speculation on whether we're treating him as a contractor and employee, then we're not adhering, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think the change is that they were looking for, under Mike Howard, in his office, using his supplies, he managed their time, he basically established all of the rules for their employment in that, in that office. When they become an employee, and they are housed here, and they're clocking in and out, and.
No, I understand that, but we have a contract with each of them, right? That is second, that is not in lieu with, with Mr. Howard, so when this was agreed to for you, this was understood, right? All I'm saying is, is that I'm hearing a lot of different things.
And I don't know, my, my understanding is, I don't know that we're, we know, are knowingly or acknowledging, yes, we're doing it wrong and we're in violation, but I think there's some fear that we're perhaps walking that line.
But we could figure out a way to adhere for six months to not do that if we decided to, right?
That would be one option if the council decided to go that route, yes.
We, at, at budget hearings, you're going to be presenting a case, I'm assuming, for a legal department.
Yes.
At such time, if, if the, if we go through that process and it's not deemed to be the direction that the county council wants to go, what happens to these two positions?
Obviously, that you, every year, make, could get to make the decision on funding for any position, so you would have the right to indicate that these are no longer going to be employee positions, and we would have to consider how we want to proceed, if we want to revert to and try and work out a contractual relationship with them that would, were available.
My follow-up, well, why would we do that, though? If it's two months, why would we make that decision for them then to come to us and create the legal department at budget hearings? Why would we make a decision for two months for them to have an, I, I don't think that makes good sense of taxpayer dollars.
I understand, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, okay.
And Lee, I guess I'm, in hearing the comments, I'm not understanding exactly, this is not creating a legal department. This is, this is, all it's doing is taking two contract employees and making them into county employees. That's it.
Correct, that's it, and.
And we haven't made any other requirements, or we haven't said anything about the legal department, that's a decision to be made at a later time.
That's as straightforward as it is now, and those salaries will be covered largely by the contractual expenses that were already budgeted for.
How much is left in the contract services budget for the year?
I don't know the answer to that, I know it's probably hundreds of thousands of dollars because we spend a lot of money in our contractual service.
That'd be a good piece of data for us to have in the justification. How long has Connor been under contract?
Two years. I'll turn to Mr. Sullivan for that, I don't know the answer to that.
Almost three years, I believe.
Who gives you day-to-day direction for your, through your daily duties? Who gives you the day-to-day direction?
It depends on the day, mostly the commissioners, I, I assist every elected official or department head, so it changes daily, but I've got everyone essentially.
Gotcha, thank you.
I think in, Sheena, Ms. Rangel spoke to that earlier, that there's been a change this year that wasn't, wasn't the norm or wasn't the practice previously when Mr. Howard was the county attorney.
Yeah, it's, it's been my experience, you've got a contracted employee who's getting some form of employee benefits of a county employee, and they're directed by county employees, they're an employee.
We got a question. So we make Connor, and I like Connor, I think we should make him an employee, we make Connor an employee, does he get bond proceeds?
So I, my error, there is a provision in this contract, it's my understanding that he would have the potential to earn some monies that are outside the scope of his normal job duties outlined in the, in the.
Job description.
Job description, thank you, that would enable him to earn up to $30,000 additional in bond fees.
It's kind of, it's kind of having it both ways, isn't it?
Is that, is that consistent with other legal departments for other governmental entities?
I don't know the answer to that, I do believe it would still have him earning less than previously with previous bond payments under previous.
I don't, I don't have any problem with having Connor as a county employee.
Agreed.
But you got the county attorney, and the, and historically, the county attorney made money when we sold bonds, okay? Now, the county attorney is a county employee, there aren't any other county employees that make money when we sell bonds.
I think there's some comments and questions that need to be resolved, and I'm going to motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Clarifying, is this just for the one position?
Just for the one, yeah, what we're talking about. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next one, Assistant Safety and Risk Manager. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Nothing on this.
Okay, go ahead, Lee, would you give us a little quick breakdown? Are any of these going to be items that we're going to be contentious again?
Yes.
Okay, Lee?
So this position is a, this is the reclassification of the safety and risk department. My understanding is this individual was hired, and almost immediately after being hired, she began assuming duties and taking on duties and roles that were well beyond the scope of her job description, we're merely trying to get her the reclassification that she has earned and deserved during her time here at the county.
Originally, when the position was crafted, COVID had just arrived, and the safety and risk department was over inundated with all of the, trying to read all those regulations. And to be honest, the safety and risk department has only had one employee since it was set in, and our county has grown, we have a lot of facilities, we have almost 1,400 employees. Stephen and his staff and his team have worked very closely with human resources, and even looking at different projects like the MyCOI, trying to make sure that all of that is in line up with validating that projects are following the legal guidelines and have enough coverage for the things that they're doing within Hamilton County. I think that is very much needed for Stephen to have someone to assist him, to go out and make sure that things are being done appropriately, and that people are trained, well-trained, and they have a big job, so Rebecca has brought a lot of great skills to the county, she's very versed with technology, and the duties within this job are things that we need to meet all of our compliance needs as well, and it's my recommendation that it's be approved.
Any comments, questions?
We discussed this in length, and here's another example of an individual who... We discussed this in length, and here's another example of an individual who rose to the occasion of, through COVID, coming in with the county, helping Mr. Rushforth get everything going, and she has worked really hard and has, and has earned, and is doing the job, and we should pay her for the job that she is doing. So that, so I, we supported it and approved it in the personnel committee.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Assistant Director of Administration, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, just so I understand, personnel, you realize we want to do this at budget time, right?
Yes, but the issue where we come forward here is that you have, you have people that are doing a job, and to have them wait for six months, that is not, that's not who we are. That's not what our...
That's who I am!
Glad I don't work for you!
Okay, moving on, next item is Paralegal Office Administrator.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Goes along with the other one for me, opposed.
Two opposed.
So I didn't hear any other ayes on the...
No, so aye.
You did? Okay, I didn't hear them, sorry. Maybe my ears back to what we were doing before. All right.
Is that your good ear or your bad ear?
I don't know if I have one anymore. Administrative Assistant, next item, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So this has an impact on the additional eighty-four reappropriations and the transfer.
That one's, yeah, not on the B. B, it does not, that's just related to some...
Okay. Next item, additional for eighty-four thousand, eleven dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is the social security and benefits for the analysts that we approved last month.
Amy did, nice second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is reappropriation for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Beaver, if you have anything you want to add to that one, that's a big number.
I can't even remember.
That's insurance.
Insurance, there you go.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Transfer of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. Do I have a motion?
Is there any impact on this number based on the one forty-fourth? Just to verify. Okay, so what number then would we be...
I couldn't even, I can't decipher that in here.
Can we make a motion based on the paralegal and the legal being removed from this?
So moved.
Second.
Don will do the calculation, and that's what the transfer will be.
And it will be less than four hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Less than.
There you go. Okay. Any questions, comments? Madam Honor, do we have, is that going to be an issue?
Nope, I'll figure it out.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Corrections, one forty-four amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Personnel, do you have an update on this one? Any comments?
Approval to backfill a vacancy with an existing employee above entry level. Mr. Watson's here, and...
Do we have any questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You only got halfway here, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
It's the effort. Okay, next item, Court Administration, an additional for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Again, this is related to the last week of pre-trial screening analysis, the screening analysts that we approved last month.
Did I vote against that?
I don't know what you voted for, sir. I'm assuming you did.
Any other comments?
May did, but states...
Questions, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Transfer of a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Do we have, okay, so...
Just moving with the money.
Moving monies, all right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Buildings and ground, one forty-four amendment. Do you want, do I have a motion to combine one forty-four and transfer?
So moved. So moved to combine the two.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the one forty-four amendments and the transfer?
So moved.
All right. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. EMA, one forty-four amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, seeing, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Prosecutor, one forty-four amendment.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sheriff, one forty-four amendments. Do I have a motion to combine the...
Motion. Second to combine.
That the one forty-four amendments and the transfer?
Yes.
Do we have, is that an extra second?
Motion, yes, yes.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Motion, so moved.
Second.
I have a quick question with regards to part-time work. Has there been discussion over whether or not we look at the entry level rate and getting rid of the fifteen dollars an hour overall? I mean, has that ever been discussed, right? Getting rid of the fifteen dollars an hour and actually looking at the...
We talked about it in the Personnel Committee, because it's just, doesn't apply.
I mean, fifteen dollars...
Sheena, do you mind coming forward?
Yeah.
Well, she's, actually, I heard her talk about it today.
Just so there's some consistency, because to me, it doesn't make sense why we...
The one, yeah, here, there, just...
So several of our part-time positions have been classified, so they would fall within a specific pay classification for pay ending. We do have some part-time general appropriations that are up to fifteen. They haven't been changed for a really long time, and Wagner Erwin is looking at that right now, so they're going to bring back a recommendation with the other changes that we've had. My department's been very busy with trying to assist departments with updating job descriptions and looking at new position requests for the 2024 budget, so that'll be a part of it. And I guess one thing that I would ask the council, is it your preference to continue with a part-time general, or would you want to have each position classified?
I think each position should be classified personally.
What helps you more?
How many part-time people do we got, Sheena?
There's a lot more than we have.
EMA, outside EMA.
But, I mean, as an example, the two positions that we had on the agenda tonight, for someone working in the jail, in the kitchen, is completely different than a secretary.
Right.
And so those rates are different because working in the kitchen and they're managing, and maids is not the same as answering a phone. And so I think it is important, and if you would like me to take it in that direction, that's what I'll do.
What's better for you, what helps you more?
Pardon?
What helps you more?
More about what helps them.
What's going to help hire people?
Well, that's what...
Well, I think it's appropriate to hire them based on the task that they're performing, because you're not going to find someone that's going to come to the jail and work in that kitchen for fifteen dollars an hour, and for them to have longevity with the county.
Yeah, it's probably in our best interest to have each job classified by its own...
I agree that we need to have each job, but shouldn't there be like a catch-all in the event that there's something coming up and you need to fill it fast rather than to go, and it's just a part-time job, rather than go get it classified?
I agree with that, but I think that if we could just say, that's a direction we'd like to go, and it provide recommendations such as what Counselor Mackey is referring to as part of what comes back would be beneficial.
Yeah, you could do a general, I guess if you wanted, but they should all be classified, and then you could do like a general...
General.
I know it's not, there's no way it's fifteen anymore.
Well, just Parks Department, it might be appropriate for their department, because they do have a lot of young people that are coming in and doing tasks that are very similar. So we'll look at each department, and I'll bring you back a report.
Thank you. All right, so back to the sheriff, any questions or comments?
No.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fund, ten twenty-five, HCA Capital Fund, requesting a reappropriation of two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We'll just reappropriate money, sorry, inappropriate.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Fund, eleven fifty-nine for health, do I have a motion to combine?
So moved.
To combine?
Oh, so moved. Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is a motion to approve the combination of Fund eleven fifty-nine for the health?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Fund twelve twenty-two statewide nine-one-one, do I have a motion to combine?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to approve that fund?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund twelve thirty-five lit dedicated to PSAP, requesting one million, six hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Judge Nation, your name's on this, you want to real...
This is to go ahead and bring our equipment up to the end of twenty-three. Now, Mike is here, if he, you have any specific questions, but it's to buy new radios, equipment, software, et cetera, to bring everybody up to the proper level up until twenty-three. I think in twenty-four, they're looking at new equipment across the board, but up to this point, they're replacing the items that are going bad, and also the items that for new officers coming on.
Any other questions, comments?
How long are they supposed to last, Mike?
They say ten years.
How long are they supposed to really last, Mike?
Five.
If your hardest worker is Councilman Griffin in the Fire Department, maybe five years.
In all honesty, when I came before you all last month, this is, this is the second part of that, which I spoke to last month, so this shores it up. But the biggest problem we run against is product supply chain, so we work with this order in front, but it's twenty-two to twenty-six weeks to get these radios for these first responders, so strategically, we have to look down there, right?
Does this give you what you need to bridge the gap until the new ones come?
Yes, and I fully anticipate my 2024 proposal before you all, there will be a significant request to keep that move back going. So this is more of a, we need this now.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
No, not for me. That's my lifeline out of my fire.
Fund forty-nine oh-six, Highway Inspection Fund, requesting seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Mackey?
Yeah, this is a routine inspection of Martin Marietta conveyor over one hundred sixtieth street. I rode under it tonight, so on the way here.
Have it been inspected yet?
Did any rocks fall down?
No.
There you go.
Okay, it's working. This is money that's prepaid, and we're just moving it, the Martin Marietta pays for us to do this work, so all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Yeah, Brad Davis, they paved Riverwood Avenue yesterday.
I was alone.
Real good, yeah.
Okay, I did not see that item, but we can add that.
It's not.
Okay. Grant appropriation transfer, I have a motion to combine funds, the four funds in question?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. A motion to approve grant appropriation transfers identified Fund ten forty-four, Fund eighty-two twenty-one, Fund ninety-one sixty-five, and Fund ninety-three oh-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. President, I forgot one thing to include. When I mentioned the kind of checkbox on, like, would like to have kind of a breakdown of what the current salary is to what the new proposed, I just want to make mention, John Lowe's, the Sheriff's Department, they always send a very, like, short and two-point cover letter. It literally just says current and promotion and gives the amount. So I don't know if this is something that we could request that each department had do when they make a request for a job description. I mean, it's very simple.
The first little, it's just an explanation of why, and then what the annual cost is and currently, and what it is proposed, it's, I think it's, it's a wonderful, as we're looking at that reporting, I think that's an item to take a look at.
Yep, it was exactly what I think we all would be, so.
Before we get to announcements, I know, Counselor Beaver, you had...
Right, I want to run something by the county council. I think I've spoken to many of you, if not everybody, at one time or another, trying to look for some way to help our citizens with the property tax increases that everybody's been experiencing over the last three or four years. And I got something I want to move forward, but I need you guys' blessing before we go down. And here's my proposal. As you all know, we're a member of the COAT Council, us and the cities lying together, set the income tax rate. Well, in the last legislative session, the state legislature has decided to reduce the state income tax by point two-five percent. My proposal is that we raise the county income tax by two-point-five percent, the exact same amount, it would generate fifty-three million dollars, and then we would direct that to homestead credit. Instead of across-the-board property tax relief, which would hit everybody, business, renters, homestead only hits homeowners. And the person, the people that I feel like need the most help, senior citizens, fixed income, they keep getting hit with property tax increases with no way of making up for it. If you're on fixed income, you're retired, whatnot, got the house, the house is paid for, you just keep getting property tax increases, but your income isn't going up as quick as the property tax. So this method should really have no real impact on any political subdivision. State's reducing, we raise ours, we take that two-point-five, which is roughly fifty-three State's reducing, we raise ours, we take that 2.5, which is roughly $53 million, convert it into homestead tax credit. Well, there's already a homestead tax credit now, raises it by that $53 million. Now, to make this work, now also understand, the way the state's done it is, it's phased in over four years, that 2.5%. But in talking to Reuters, and he looked into it, a big portion of that phase in over four years happens in the first year. So what I need permission from you is to get with Jeter and Reuters and work out a resolution that explains what we want to do, how much it is, and I got to get it and get out to the major cities before October, so they can see it theoretically, if they did approve it, we got to have it done before some, some date in October, Don.
October 1st to have an effective date of release.
And, and just like, this was discussed in finance, there's two things I want to add, just to clarify, point of clarification. The reason why we can't go and give a direct relief to those fixed incomes is that we're legally not allowed to do that.
Yes, you're exactly right. I looked at every way to get the, some type of prob, income tax is the only lever that we control ourselves. And Kim's right, the, you could go across the board with property tax relief, it hits everybody. Like I said, commercial and residential, but this homestead is the only one that zeros in on homeowners themselves. And it is, it is close to it's one of the very few things that we can do.
I would make a motion for you to have, I mean, I don't know if you need a motion.
I don't need a motion. I need to, just to tell you
I would say yes.
Because we'll probably incur some expense of, of, of the lawyer and the financial advisor. This is not inside their regular duties, but I'm going to get with them, work out the details. I really wanted to come out to one piece of papers, so then get on the agenda with, go to a Carmel Fisher's and kind of take a roadshow and say, look, this is what we want to do. When I have it formalized, I'll ask for a vote here, because I wouldn't go to them unless I got approval from the County Council.
Do you have any statistics or data as to compared to how many households would use that compared to the amount of money we would increase?
Yeah, what, what's the
In other words, you're saying if we increased it to 53 million, I don't know how many households are using the household credit now so that we would be able to say, yes, that would take up all of the 53 million, or it would only take up 20 million?
Right. No, I don't have that, and that's one of the things I got to work out. So, and I'd also like to have some example, if you own a house that costs 200,000, whatever the case may be, what would that impact each of you? And I haven't, I haven't narrowed it all down. I would, I would guess off the top of my head that once you spread $53 million throughout the entire county, it won't be substantial. But it's something, and, and I don't see anybody else doing anything.
And, and because we can't do a, a specific for retired individuals, we, this is the only way that we could go and get the most impact to them.
We, I was looking to, to hit a retired person, like senior citizens or whatnot, that's not within our legal purview to do. That, that takes legislation.
So is everybody comfortable with him?
May, and to come back maybe in the next council meeting with some information, like, if you have any questions, please pass it on to Brad, and we can try and have that addressed at the next council meeting.
Yeah, what's the, what's the amount? That's my question. Spread out, just this much, but
It is, and I have no answer for that, but, but being the state has reduced theirs, it seemed like something that we could do with, you know, and hopefully, the cities would see it and say, well, they'd take money out of our pocket. You know what I mean? That's really, once you start asking them to contribute money out of their general fund, then things get a little hinky when it's they didn't have it in the first place, so they don't miss it, you know what I mean? That's what I'm hoping for anyway. But I'll have some more, how much it means to individual people, how many people use a home
I wouldn't want it to be looked at as a tax increase.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
And, and if we're saying
Well, wait a minute, how would you look at it as a tax increase?
Because the state is giving back 25% to everybody, and then we're saying we're going to take that 25%. And if only 10% of our population uses that credit, you've now increased 53 million taxes to all people in Hamilton County, and you're not giving it back. There's no way you can give it back to the homeowners. There's only certain people that you can ask for the home
Yeah, that'd be people that own homes.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're, what you're suggesting is, is that if it comes back, that the $53 million wouldn't be spent on the, on the real estate taxes that were given, then how are we, then, then maybe we going back with something less?
Yes, yes.
And, and
So in other words, it would equal out to what, in other words, the taxpayers would not have a negative impact?
I, I think there's a lot of information that needs to be
There's a lot of, we get that.
If the decrease from
I'll dig it out.
Is greater, if they're better off to just get the decrease from the state and use that however they want, rather than us do that, that's, yeah. Just to find out what's, but they're all looking into it, I'd say. Again, again, I think this is just an idea that's being presented. We're just trying to do something that can give back to our people that are in need in our community that I know, I think all of us here have heard from at some point in time. So with that, I'm going to move on to other announcements. Sheriff?
I have none, thank you.
Counsel Attorney?
I have none, thank you.
Madam Auditor?
I do. I just wanted to stand before you, let you know, and give kudos to our Hamilton County Treasurer's Office, my Settlement Department, and my Settlement and AP and AR Department, because Settlement was done and distributed on June 1st. And there used to be crying and gnashing of teeth back in the day when we were, we were right at the, the June 30th and December 31st deadlines. And it's just a great tribute to these women and men who have done this, and this is the earliest that we have ever had our settlement done. So I just wanted to stand up here and let you know and thank these people for, for what they've done this year. So I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
All right.